All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the August twentieth twenty twenty four meeting of the West Richland City Council to order at six P. M. And before we get started this evening, I'd like to ask Stephanie to read our high-bred meeting ground rules and then call the roll.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right-clicking on your video view and selecting Rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on Participants and then click on Raise Hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Okay, roll call. Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom? Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
Kate Moran? John Smart? Ken Stoker?
Yeah.
And Councilmember Hayes asked to be excused this evening.
May I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Hayes this evening? Motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. And before we get started, I'll, we have seating up here in the front if you'd like to, like to join us or, yeah.
We don't bite.
Somebody knows where some spare chairs are back there. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Eric? We have our school kids with us again today. Welcome. Glad to see you guys here. Get everybody situated. Thank you, Eric. Now, Councilmember Bloom, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
The Pledge of Allegiance, we are a flag in the United States of America. And together in our land for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Bloom. Counsel, the agenda is before you this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agendas presented?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Back him. Motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. And this evening, we have presentations from David Replough. And David is with Hanford Communities, and one of the many hats that he wears. We also have Bethany Close with him from the Hanford Communities. And David is going to give us an update on what's happening with the Hanford Communities. So, David, thank you for joining us this evening. Much appreciated you taking some time out of your schedule and changing hats halfway through the day to come see us. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the introduction and council members. It's good to be with you, with you here in person this evening. I've updated you a few times in the past, but I think it's all always been virtual. So it's good to be here in person in front of a, probably the largest crowd I've been in front of for a council, a city council update. I probably should have coordinated first. Is there a clicker for me to use to go through this, or do I ask somebody just to change slides? All right. Well, I'll start if you could go to the next slide, please. Start by just giving you, I think we've, we've talked about this before, so I won't go into a whole lot of details, but a little bit of background about Hanford Communities. It's an organization that was formed in nineteen ninety-four. For those of us who were in this community at that time, you might recall that a lot of transition was happening at the Hanford site. There was a lot of uncertainty regarding what the risks were to the community, to the environment, what Hanford cleanup was going to look like. And at the time, the Department of Energy was still kind of struggling to lift the veil of kind of secrecy that existed, that had existed at the Hanford site since the Manhattan Project began. And so understandably, the local governments in our community felt like they needed a voice and needed to be involved in the decision-making process at Hanford. They also found that they were each investing a significant amount of staff time to track what was happening and to be involved and recognize that everybody is sort of on the same side of this issue and working together. And so it probably makes more sense for all the local governments to come together and create this organization, which was then called Hanford Communities. If we could go to the next slide, please? So Hanford Communities consists of really two boards. A governing board, which is the policymaking board, and includes an elected official from each of the participating seven local governments. Our chair is Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Chuck Turelli from the city of Kennewick. And then for the city of West Richland, your representative is Councilwoman Hayes with Councilman Bloom as her alternate. And then we also, next slide, please. And then on the administrative board, that handles the administrative functions for, for, for the organization. Mayor Gary serves as the chair of that administrative board. And I just wanted to do a quick shout out to Cindy Reince, who is here. She is the former retired city manager for the city of Richland. And she helped to make the transition, which I was going to briefly mention as well. The Hanford Communities used to operate underneath the city of Richland. When the previous executive director retired, it made sense for Hanford Communities to kind of be operated by TRIDEC, which is one of the other hats that Mayor Gary mentioned that I wear, because I was doing a lot of Hanford-related work there as the vice president for federal programs. And so Cindy, along with many others, worked to kind of make that transition. And I think it's gone really well over the last few years. That transition happened in twenty twenty, right when COVID was happening as well. So if we could go to the next slide, please? So I'll just quickly talk about some of the kind of key highlights that happened at the Hanford site in twenty twenty-three. One of the things that I think it's really important for all of us to kind of recognize is how important Hanford is for our community for any number of reasons. I think for those of us who, like myself, kind of were born and raised here, you probably remember, at least if you're my age or older, you remember a time when everybody that you knew had one family member at least who worked out of the Hanford site. And it was, we were sort of a company town. And the economy, the civic life, everything kind of rose and fell with whatever happened at the Hanford site. Since in the, in the last twenty or thirty years, our community has almost doubled in size as a whole. And we don't really have that connection as closely as maybe we had in the past, but Hanford cleanup is still extremely important for the entire community, not just Richland or West Richland or Pasco or any particular city, both because of, you know, the cleanup, although it's, it's really safe, it's, there's not any immediate threats to the public or risk to the public or the environment that could cause public health concerns. If it's not addressed and cleaned up effectively, then there will be a day at some point in the future where we do have those problems. Additionally, you folks from out throughout the tri-cities and throughout the larger region work at the Hanford site. And it is a driver for the economy. The Hanford site received over three billion dollars in federal funding last year, employed twelve thousand full-time employees, plus many more part-time or kind of secondary employees too. So it really is important for our community for any number of reasons. In twenty twenty-three, I'll try to, to say the full acronyms, but I didn't want the slides to be super long. So DF Law stands for the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility. As I think a lot of us know, there's fifty-six million gallons of waste stored in one hundred and seventy-seven underground tanks across the Hanford site in the two-hundred area. That's the biggest challenge and cost driver and timeline driver for completing Hanford cleanup. They're planning on vitrifying or turning, blending the waste into glass for a significant portion of the low-activity waste and all of the high-level waste at the Hanford site. The first, and we've all heard about the vit plant or waste treatment plant, and that's where that's going to happen. They poured the first patch of, batch of test glass for the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility. They also need to pre-treat that waste, the tank waste, before it goes to the DF Law Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility. And so they pre-treated about seven hundred thousand gallons of that tank waste. One of the things that I think is really important when we're talking about protecting the environment is treating the groundwater. And one of the things that is sort of, it's not really cool or exciting, but for the ninth consecutive year in a row, over two billion gallons of groundwater was treated before any contaminants can reach the Columbia River. Just in the interest of time, I'll kind of go on to the next slide, if I could, please? So one of the other things that's really important for us as a community is PILT. That's Payment in Lieu of Taxes. Obviously, the Hanford site is owned by the federal government and therefore is not subject to local property taxes. And so many, many years ago, the federal government came up with this mechanism to kind of make up to the local governments the, the, the resources that otherwise would have been taxed if it was not in federal ownership. That funding has been, mostly goes to, directly to the county, Benton County, as well as there's some portions of the Hanford site and in Franklin and Grant Counties as well. But then goes from the, from the county to school districts. The Richland School District is probably the single largest recipient of PILT funding, along with transportation, infrastructure, and any number of other benefits to the community. So that's something we've been really focusing on and tracking, and it's been well-funded recently. One of the things I'm going to touch on more later is holistic negotiations. For the last four-plus years, the tri-party agencies, meaning the Department of Energy, the Environmental Protection Agency, and the Washington State Department of Ecology, have been in sort of secret negotiations on a path forward for Hanford's tank waste treatment. And so earlier this year, they announced kind of the, the, what they call the settlement agreement regarding what they agreed to after those four-plus years of negotiations. We also added a new staff member about a year ago, Bethany Close, who, as Mayor Gary mentioned, is, is with me here this evening. We hosted three local government tours of the Hanford cleanup and the Manhattan Project National Park. That's something we probably would like to do again, maybe later this year or early next year, is new council members and staff come on board, because again, it's a really complex, big site, and being able to see it for yourself really helps folks understand it. Lastly, one of the things that we, as a community, have really been excited about is the creation of the Manhattan Project National Historical Park. That was created in, it started, it really began in the year twenty sixteen and includes Hanford, Oak Ridge, and Los Alamos. And we have a Tri-Cities National Park Committee, in which Mayor Gary is the chair, that meets monthly to really continue to work to build the park up to its full potential, both as a source of community pride and the contributions that we made to helping the, the U. S. to win the Second World War and the Cold War, but also to help attract visitors and to help tell our story in that piece of really not only local but American history. So if I could have the next slide, please? Now that we're, you know, more than halfway through twenty twenty-four, overview for, for, for the current year. Tisker operations, the tank side season removal are moving, is moving forward. The second melter is heated up at the Direct Feed Low-Activity Waste Facility. Importantly, one of the things that we've really been focusing on as a community is finding ways to get that waste out of the tanks sooner. And one of those approaches is called the Test Bed Initiative, where instead of vitrifying all of that low-activity waste, you can instead grout it, mix it with engineered concrete, grout-like material, and then store it permanently off outside of the state, likely in locations either in Utah or Texas. It has the potential to get that waste out of the tanks much sooner and also significantly reduce long-term costs, which is one of the big barriers for making progress at the Hanford site. So the, the tri-party agencies announced that they were going to move forward with a two-thousand-gallon demonstration of, of, of that effort. As, as I referenced earlier, the holistic negotiations reached a conceptual agreement, which again, I'll speak to in a little bit. But the other thing I really wanted to highlight again is, as a community, Hanford cleanup and getting Hanford cleanup done is really important. But budget, again, is a challenge. We have an incredible congressional delegation, Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, Congressman Newhouse, getting support from Congresswoman McMorris Rogers as well and, and others. And they fight really hard, and we get three billion dollars, which is a lot of funding, and it's going to be more likely next year. But if, if we were to be compliant, if we're going to get, if we were to get the, the full amount of funding that would be necessary, we'd be looking at closer to probably four, closer to four billion. And by the end of this decade, it'd be much higher than that. And some of those numbers are just not realistically achievable. And when you look at some of the estimates of total cost of six hundred and forty billion dollars for completion by the year twenty seventy-eight, do the math, that's about ten, eleven billion dollars a year, every year until then. And again, that's not achievable. And so what can we do to get the site cleaned up in a safe and effective manner, but at a cost that Congress is likely to actually fund? And that's where things like the Test Bed Initiative and others are really important opportunities. If we could go into the, go ahead, go ahead to the, oh, I'm sorry, before we move on, I did also want to highlight that another part of what we do at Hanford Communities is to really help to inform the community about both the Hanford site, because it is complex, it's big, and there's a lot of acronyms. And, and especially with the addition of Bethany to our team, we've been able to really set up a very robust, robust social media. We've done multiple campaigns. We have several times a week Facebook posts and YouTube videos and things like that. But the, the goal is really, because again, not everybody today knows somebody who works at the Hanford site, but you might read a headline in the newspaper or see something on the news about, what's this DF Law or Tisker or K Basins or whatever it might be? And our website and, and the videos and things like that can help to be that kind of resource to get people generally acquainted with what's happening at Hanford, why it matters. And also to encourage the members of our community to be, to become or to continue to be engaged in the decision-making process at Hanford. If you could go, we could probably skip the next slide. I already kind of touched on the Test Bed Initiative. We did also have a new top person for the DOE Office of Environmental Management that oversees cleanup at the Hanford site, as well as many other sites across the country, Candace Robertson. She's a former locally elected official in Nye County, Nevada, where Yucca Mountain is. That's how she first got introduced to the Department of Energy. But she has a, a really kind of good grasp, I think, of the importance of the, the relationship that needs to exist between the Department of Energy and its host communities. And so we're very much looking forward to working with her moving forward. If I could get to the next slide, slide, please? So I, I touched on this already, but this is really pretty important development with the holistic negotiation settlement agreement. As part of this agreement, all the tri-party agencies came together to agree on a path forward for managing Hanford's and treating Hanford's tank waste. A couple of the key highlights are, are moving forward with larger-scale grouting of the low-activity tank waste in the, what's called the two-hundred west area, the, the tank farms in the western part of the central portion of the Hanford site. That had been a real sticking point, especially with the state in the past. And so the state came on board, and it has the potential to reduce that risk sooner and reduce some of those long-term costs. You all probably saw some headlines just last week that a new tank is leaking, the third known leaking tank now at the Hanford site is called T-101. It's estimated to be leaking about two hundred gallons a year into the soil. Now, for context, that soil has already been very contaminated over the decades and decades of, of work at the Hanford site. So it's not like it's a new, they sometimes call it insult to the environment, but it still is troubling that we have three leaking tanks now at the Hanford site. And the longer that, that waste is in the tanks, the more tanks are going to leak, leak. And so the sooner we can get that waste out of the tanks, the better off we're all going to be. So moving forward with, with larger-scale grouting is, is a real important move in the right direction. And they also agreed to, one of the areas where we're not so sure about is forbear or not use the high-level waste interpretation at the Hanford site. That's something that we don't have time to go into today, but it has the potential to save some significant costs in the long run while not affecting the, the, the cleanup. Now, there might be some other ways, that might be, that might be something that they come back to at some point in the future, but that's a question that we've had. But ultimately, when we think back about five, six, seven, eight, ten years ago, it seemed like the community, the regulators, and the Department of Energy, nobody was aligned. And when you look at where there has been successful cleanup elsewhere, like at Rocky Flats in Colorado, where there's successful cleanup going on right now at Savannah River in South Carolina, the, the common thread amongst all the successful cleanup projects is that there's alignment between the communities, the, the key stakeholders, the regulators, and the Department of Energy. And we didn't have that with this settlement agreement. It's a, it's a strong signal, signal that we are moving in the right direction. So that's, I think, the key takeaway and what we're most pleased with. Lastly, the last slide, if I could. Every year, Hanford Communities Governing Board puts together an issue agenda which identifies our priorities, and these are our, our, our top priorities. Funding for cleanup, long-term costs and schedule reduction, site-wide risk reduction. Again, there's no immediate threats to the public, but there is a, a lot of potential risks out there that need to be proactively addressed. And so encouraging focus and investment in those areas is, is going to continue to be really important. A lot of us remember the, the Purex Tunnel collapse a few years ago. Mayor Steve Young of Kennewick at the time was getting calls from CNN asking how the evacuation was going of Kennewick. And so that, that is not good for our community, for our reputation, and many other things. So addressing those risks is important. And then I think the last thing I, I'd touch on is the Cleanup to Clean Energy Initiative. Again, maybe some of you saw some headlines about that over the last year, but the Department of Energy came up with this concept, Cleanup to Clean Energy. That term was actually coined by Sandra Haines, the chair of, of the TRIDAC Board of Directors, but also the chancellor of WSU Tri-Cities. And it was sort of borrowed by the Department of Energy to, to identify land at Hanford and at other sites where clean energy projects could be developed. We had some concerns at one point about their approach. Feel like we're probably more aligned now, and they've identified up to eight thousand acres for a solar project that would go out there, but also importantly preserved a corridor that the community really felt was important to preserve for other sorts of energy and decarbonized industrial manufacturing and job-creating projects as well. So that was, that's, that was, and is going to continue to be a big deal. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have, but I appreciate this opportunity to give you an update.
David, thank you. And Bethany, you're a great asset to the organization, and thanks for coming aboard. I, I'm more in touch with things now, because Bethany's always pinging me on stuff, but I do thank her for that. Counsel, do you have any questions to David regards to his presentation this evening? All right, David, thank you so much. I appreciate what you do for us, both with TRIDEC and Hanford Communities, and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Lot of information. You know, you go back, David and I, we were both born and raised in, in the Tri-City area, so I imagine there's a lot of you that have been around as long as, as David and I have, but, yeah, it's, it's a very important part of our community, and Hanford Communities is important to keep, keep the communities informed and, and keep our congressional offices writing that big check and having that heavy lift. Cindy, again, thank you for the, the transition to, to David being the executive director of that particular organization, and it's, it's serving us very well. So with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the Consent Agenda this evening, which consents payment of the bills, approved in the minutes of the regular meeting, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Ordinance eighteen twenty-four, revising corporate boundaries of West Richland to include a portion of Rupert Road right-of-way. Resolution forty-seven twenty-four, to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement regarding a revision of corporate boundaries with Benton County. Resolution forty-eight twenty-four, authorize the adoption of the proclamation proclaiming September twenty twenty-four as attendance awareness month. And a motion to accept finance HVAC replacement project as complete. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the Consent Agenda this evening? Seeing no one here, virtually, anybody virtually like to speak to the Consent Agenda this evening? Raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. Seeing no one, council, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda this evening as presented?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second. Motion of second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. And we'll move on to our first opportunity for citizen public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you would like to provide comments to the council, come, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes for your comments. And remember, too, that council does not respond to questions during a comment period, and at this timeframe is comments not related to items on the agenda. So is there anyone who would like to speak to council this evening? Come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one in-house, we'll move virtually, anybody virtually like to speak to items not on the Consent Agenda this evening, star nine or raise your virtual hand? I see none. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
With that, then we will go ahead and move on to item eight A. Is an ordinance for a text amendment to allow recreational marijuana retail sales in light industrial zones. Community Development Director Eric Minderhall, would you please staff report this evening, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to tell you the story and provide the facts on how this proposal came before the council and the citizens of West Richland. On November eleventh, twenty twenty-two, staff received an application from K&amp;B Weaver LLC to allow cannabis sales in the general commercial light, or commercial light industrial and light industrial zoning districts. As is customary, staff brought and reviewed the text amendment proposal with the Community and Economic Development Council Subcommittee on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, and received feedback from the committee or subcommittee to bring the matter for further discussion with the full council. Staff discussed the potential of cannabis sales as part of the series of council workshops on January twenty-fourth and January twenty, or thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, which included council's recommendations to include the proposal of cannabis in the citywide survey that year. Council wanted to hear the voice of the people prior to taking further action. The subject was included in the citywide survey that was conducted from May through June of twenty twenty-three. The survey was sent out to over three thousand email addresses associated with the utility billing and included the survey on social media, had QR codes down at the library and here at City Hall. Out of the three thousand fifty emails sent out and approximately six thousand one hundred and fifty-nine households within the city, the city received six hundred and sixty-two city, citizen responses, indicating at that time that a majority of the citizens would be in favor of cannabis sales. Staff then proceeded with the proposed text amendment for discussion with the Planning Commission on July seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. The Planning Commission went through their process, they heard it, they held public meetings. They had a hearing where quite a few people showed up and provided testimony to them. They asked for additional information, and staff brought that information back to them. The initial proposal for the text amendment, as I stated, was to allow it in the, the commercial districts and light industrial districts. Staff changed that and recommended only in the light industrial. And the Planning Commission voted three to, or, let's see, let's see, it was three to one recommending council to approve the, the proposed text amendment. Public comments have been encouraged throughout the process, and staff has received them both verbally and electronically. Most of these comments submitted have been in opposition of the amendment. The city council held a duly-advertised public hearing on November seventh, twenty twenty-three, and heard public comments. The city council then held a meeting on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and had considerable debate on the matter. Council then voted for three in favor of tabling conversation until an advisory vote could be completed. On August sixth, twenty twenty-four, the advisory vote was held during the primary election, requesting from the voting public if cannabis should be allowed in the city of West Richland. The results of the primary election advisory vote, vote are as follows, and this was just checked here just before the meeting, as the vote is now certified. To allow was two thousand three hundred and eighty-four, or forty-four point six-three percent. Do not allow two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight, or fifty-five point three-seven percent. Total votes was five thousand three hundred and forty-two. Given the results of the advisory vote, staff is recommending council deny the proposed text amendment. A suggested motion is included on page one of the staff report. I'd like to commend council for taking necessary action to be informed on this large decision that was presented to you. You had a lot of information provided to you over the past almost two years. You listened to the people, you didn't take premature action, but you sought for more information. You wanted not to just hear the voices of those showing up to the meetings, you wanted to hear from everyone that was willing to have their voice heard and may not have been comfortable with having their voices heard under the circumstances. I believe you took the high road and now have a solid position to stand on. The voice of the people now is undeniable with the advisory vote. I would also like to commend and thank all involved, both sides of the aisle, on this subject. Both sides provided persuasive arguments that will hopefully lead to an informed, well-discussed and thoughtful decision this evening. I know that there has been a lot of passion and energy put into this effort, and I hope all involved will continue to seek to have their voices heard and participate in their local government. That's all this evening.
Thank you, Eric. Much appreciated. And I'd like to remind everybody in this audience that we do conduct our council meetings in a professional manner and would appreciate holding emotions and enthusiasm, whichever way they may be, pro or con of a particular item that's being discussed here this evening. So with that, is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on this agenda either this evening? And if so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Also remind you that council does not interact back and forth with the podium speaker. Anyone locally in-house here? Come to the podium, state your name and address. Over to the podium, state your name and address for the record and after we get through if people in-house, we'll go out to the virtual lands.
Dan Ritchie, 508 Austin Drive, and thank you very much for the opportunity to address you on this issue tonight. I have given Stephanie, let's see, 211 signatures on a petition that states the following. We, the concerned citizens of West Richland, do not support the introduction of recreational pot stores into our family-friendly city. We ask the West Richland City Council to vote to maintain the current provision banning pot stores inside West Richland city limits. So that petition has been a copy of that. No, she has the original. So giving that to Stephanie. There are also 32 letters that were signed and submitted and those, those letters are addressed to everyone on the council and yourself, Mayor, there. The subject is opposition to proposed marijuana retail stores. It says, "I, the undersigned, am submitting this letter to express my concern and to state my opposition to marijuana retail stores being considered in West Richland. I see no positive benefits to our community and foresee only negative consequences if these businesses are allowed. The influence on and dangers to our adolescents and to our younger children are particularly disturbing. The legality of drug dealing has, of course, changed in the state of Washington, but the nature of it and the impact that it has on society has not changed. I pledge to stay informed on this matter. I will fully support those council members who sincerely and with transparency oppose attempts to establish marijuana retail businesses in our community and I will adamantly oppose those who support them." So this letter and, and the petition has been provided to Stephanie. I also wanted to state that I have submitted a public records request asking for all of the costs associated with this endeavor. And to that end, I was surprised when Stephanie informed me that the cost associated with what was spent by the city was not tracked. I found that kind of disconcerting because something of this magnitude certainly should be tracked and I should have the right as a citizen to ask what was spent and where did it go? And I can't. And so I did also ask that the county cost, whenever that bill comes in, which we expect that to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, $50,000 to $70,000 to put this item on the ballot. So when that bill comes in, I would like to, I'd like to know what those costs are. So I'll be following up with Stephanie on that. Last thing I'll say, and then I'll shut up and sit down, is we're a bedroom community to the Hanford site. We just listened to something here. So we are, what we do in this city impacts what our cash cow, how they're going to look at us. And nobody out there handling that waste right now is smoking dope. At least they shouldn't be, and if they are, they won't be doing it for long until the next year analysis. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening in-house? Sure?
Yeah, David Garber, 3703 Northlake Drive, West Richland. First, I'd like to encourage all the council members to represent the will of the people that elected them and the clear majority and the advisory vote that was recently taken. I'd also like to make a fine point, I guess, there was a lot of discussion last year about a survey and I think we heard some stats on how many were taken and how many received. And the consultant represented that the results of that were reliable and even though the number was small and then there was even some question about the people that were passed on emails and voted were weeded out, but statistically, I guess I would just say, I think it's a lesson learned, be careful when your paid consultants tell you things. And in this case, he was obviously 180% out from the truth. But perhaps even more interesting is he represented that it was accurate, even knowing that it was a very small sample. So anyway, I want to second what Dan said and encouraging you all to listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Come in, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Thank you. Jonathan Lund, 5500 Aloha Drive, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, thank you for your time today. I work out at the Hanford site and I have a small family and I live in West Richland, obviously. I am against the sale of marijuana in the city of West Richland for a number of reasons. The first of which is that it will make my job more difficult at Hanford since it is a federal site and marijuana is still legal federally. It will be much more difficult to maintain my job and provide for my family, not understanding or knowing the different substances that my friends, family and coworkers might, might have or offer me. I am also concerned with the impact that it will have on my children as they attend school and as they continue to grow and develop in this community. I appreciate the safeguards that do exist currently in the city of West Richland. We find it a very appealing place to live and an appealing place to, to spend money and vote and we are grateful to be here. I would like the opportunity to acknowledge the public, the public vote and, and the voice of the people and encourage the city council to support those that support them in their elected offices. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Carrie Davies, 3706 Southlake Drive in West Richland. And I sent a letter to the council members by email this afternoon, just for note, Council Member Hayes has bounced back to me, so I'm not quite sure why, but it was identified, I think, as spam. So I will try again to pass that along to her. Excuse me, I'm not going to read the whole thing that I sent in, hopefully it'll be a part of the record. But the question that I have at this point is, I hope and anticipate that the council will fully support what the outcome of the advisory vote was. And also I would like to hear council discussion at the appropriate time to know what we can do to make sure this issue doesn't pop back up again in a year or in two years or in six months. So how do we protect our city and our council members and our community from having to go through this process again anytime in the future? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Cole, 1710 Ironwood Avenue. We revamped the West Richland Citizens Group last year due to the lack of action on the part of council with respect to the petition for zoning change to allow for a pot shop in our family-friendly town. This group is committed to holding the council accountable to the people of West Richland and this is really just the beginning. Through petition signing drives, doorbelling, sign waving, letter signing, as Dan mentioned, social media posts and word of mouth, we have provided information and educated hundreds of people in this area on the negative effects of pot in our family-friendly town. Many of us here tonight have spoken on many occasions, occasions at council meetings until we were silenced on this topic. The advisory vote results are in, as we heard, and they are proof that the residents of West Richland do not support rezoning to allow for pot shops now and hopefully never. We have spoken and now the onus is on each of you to adhere to the results of that vote and to remember who you represent. We elected you and we expect you to represent us in all cases. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Should be like the driver's license place, you know, he's pulling a number, right? Go ahead.
My name is Jacob at 5897 Teak Lane. I come to you as a father. I come to you as a pastor, Reliance Fellowship over on the edge of West Richland. And I plead, I feel like I'm coming late to this discussion, but while there might be financial rewards on one end of it, from my experience, it comes at a cost which we carry the lives of those who have been burdened by these addictions. We already have other addictions. I would plead not to add to the troubles that we are already coming alongside of people. The beauty of the religious communities in the West Richland is we will bear that financial burden to help restore families and individuals who are burdened by these things. I would ask, don't make it harder for us as we financially invest of our own resources. We moved to this city because it is a good city. We love the people here and I would plead on behalf of my own congregation to not go forward with providing further addictions to our, our community. Thank you.
Else?
Kelly Smart for her in South 54th Avenue. I want to ask that city council not only heed the advice of the people given this last election, but to know for yourself that West Richland deserves better. West Richland deserves to have a drug-free community for its families and residents. Look around, this community is thriving with families in safe streets. We have an amazing police force and great potential for family-friendly, positive businesses. West Richland should never allow any sort of business that is destructive and degrades the quality of life. This includes but not limited to pot shops, strip clubs, adult bookstores and more alcohol sales or any other type of destructive, negative businesses. The planning commission should have never passed this proposition in the first place. They should have known just by looking at the city's vision, values and mission statement that pot does not belong in our community. I want city council and all of city staff from this point forward to know that this community does not want cannabis sales within city limits and should immediately reject all future applications fervently. Now I want to go for more awareness of what the effects of pot has in an article written by Alicia Finley entitled Marijuana and the Violent Crime Surge, found on the National Library of Medicine website. She states, "It is much easier for young people to get hooked as they use the drug more frequently to satisfy cravings. They develop psychological and social problems. That's what happened to Colorado teenager Johnny Stack. His mother Laura wrote a harrowing book chronicling his descent into cannabis addiction. He started smoking weed at 14 after Colorado legalized it and progressed to using more potent products such as dabs. He gradually withdrew from social activities and developed psychosis. Substance abuse treatment and a state mental hospital failed to cure him because chronic marijuana use permanently rewired his brain. Delusional, he jumped off a six-story building and killed himself. Alas, he's not an anomaly. People who have taken large doses of the drug may experience an acute psychosis, which includes hallucinations, delusions and a loss of sense of personal identity." She answered the article saying, "Maybe it's time that lawmakers and voters rethink their pot legalization experiment before more young lives are damaged," end quote. Johnny is not the only one. EveryBrainMatters.org lists others, many others, who have had their lives ruined and taken because of marijuana use. Here are only a few of the many who are listed. Randy Backus III, Spencer Burkett, Charles Rogers and Tyler Southard. I don't have time to list all of their stories, but describe, I will describe two. Charles struggled with mental health. Marijuana was the medicine he, for anxiety. Escalating to other drugs quickly, this led to an obsession with substances and Charles took his life in 2015. When in high school, Tyler went from being a straight A student and not caring about his, to not caring about his grades anymore. And although he experimented with other drugs, it was always marijuana he was addicted to. As his father opened the bathroom door one Saturday morning, it was evident that Tyler had taken his own life. I urge city council to say no to allowing more drugs into our community. I urge city council to act on their values, vision and mission statement by voting no to pot. We, the people, do not want pot now or ever. Thank you."
Good evening. So my name is Nino Capitula, 6783 Caspian Place. And today I am here not only speaking on my behalf, I have been in communication with land developers and major construction companies and many of them could not be here personally, but they allowed me to speak on their behalf and I will mention their names and we'll just go down the list. So P&amp;R Development, Promate Home, Capitula Homes, Timeless Home, Lambert Homes, just to name the few. Also, I would like to remind the city council members that the amount of money that we get from building permits, then when people buy the houses from taxes, property taxes, also the job creation, also how it further develops our city. We have Richland's, Teresa Richardson's, Richland's mayor, I'll go on record, saying that this is not something that they're interested in having in their city. So let's just kind of go deeper and, and start thinking how it might affect us. And just what they all said was that they're not just building homes. This is a statement by all. They're not just building homes, they're building communities and they want the communities that they build to be safe and family-friendly. So I urge you to make a wise choice today and do not allow a pot shop in this town. Thank you very much.
Else this evening? Whoever gets there first?
Oh, I'm Paula Doronso, 3720 Mountain Meadows Road in West Richland. I live exactly one block north of our current pot shop and I can tell you I've lived there 11 years. In the last four years, I have seen more aggressive drivers and I intentionally watch and nine times out of 10 or better, they're going into the pot shop. I have seen more accidents on Kennedy Road. I have, I do not feel safe walking. I used to walk out of our neighborhood, up into the neighborhoods. I will not do that now. One time I actually fell because I was sliding down the gravel to try and get out of way of a driver that was being more aggressive and I contributed that to the pot shop that is currently right adjacent to our city. So I oppose the pot shop and that's what I've got to say about it.
Good evening. Sidney Hampton, 3505 South Highlands Boulevard. I'm speaking because I have an ex-drug addict. My cousin gave me pot, said, "Oh, it'll never affect you the first time." It made me laugh. But then I was led into many other drugs over many years, until I was a junkie on the street being chased by our wonderful policeman. That ended 25 years ago, but I have grandchildren now, praise be to God, and I don't want them to be introduced right down my street to the marijuana, to the shop that says this won't hurt you. I want my children safe. I want my grandchildren safe. And I don't know about everyone in this room, but it's important to me. As the lady back there who just spoke, I have watched collision after collision on Kennedy Road. If you're coming from the east on Kennedy Road, you best be prepared to stop because they're turning, they have their evening business to take care of and it's in that green and yellow building. I've watched it over and over and it breaks my heart. I oppose this majorly. I didn't get the emails or the texts or anything to speak out on this prior. I thank you for your time. It's good to see some of those I know, but I don't want my grandchildren going down the same road I did because it ain't gonna hurt you the first time. My parents hurt me the first time when they figured it out. Thank you.
Ann Greiner, 5702 Mulberry. As I understand it, the planning commission was considering this as a recommendation of raising revenue for the city. I think we all recognize as the city grows, the city's going to need revenue. I think that there's lots of businesses that we can try to work to attract. There may be trade-offs in all of them. I don't think the trade-offs would be anywhere close to the ones we're talking about with this situation. And I would prefer, I think most of us would, that we don't consider any kind of scheme which ends up- which ends up being a fundraiser for the state. I think we all know the state has plenty of money and getting it from any way they can, while we only get 2% of it. To me, that's not really a good thought-out revenue source for any city, not to mention what has already been spoken. So I was one of many people associated with one of the groups that's interested in West Richland right now, am recommending, will try to pursue, and recommend things to you, such as, I think, I don't know, that you're getting some revenue from the Benton REA, or you will. And if you've been facilitating that, I congratulate you for that. And I'd just see more of that kind of thing. And I think that you all would be looking up, not down, to get the money. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Aaron Parker, I live at 5301 Blue J Lane. I learned an interesting fact a couple weeks ago. Out of all the shows on Disney Plus, one show is 29% of all hours viewed. And not just episodes watched, but all hours viewed. And that's Bluey. Which, I understand, having two young kids and two more on the way. It is an amazing show that everybody loves. And I find that fact fascinating, that 29% of everything viewed is Bluey. Because they've made billions and billions of dollars of acquisitions on shows that have already been successful, and none of them can come close to the success of Bluey. Which is a show about a family of dogs where the parents instill family values into their daughters. And it's baffling to me at times when I see what Disney produces, it seems to be out of touch with their audience. They have a winning formula, and oftentimes, they go away from that winning formula. I feel like, prior to this advisory vote, many of the arguments made were, you know, surveys, statistics, studies done by health organizations, revenue impact, planning commissions, whatever else. But up until that vote, all of that, I think, had weight. After the vote, in a constitutional republic, where we have representatives that represent the people, after that vote, none of that matters anymore. It's the will of the people that matters. And you clearly know the will of the people now. So I would say, don't take any advice from Disney and ignoring their audiences. The demographics of your constituency have clearly voted that they don't want pot. And I would encourage you to listen to the will of the people. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Eve Smat, 1788 Ironwood. That was the third time I've addressed a council on this subject. First time, I was kind of negative. I had a sense of, I guess, indignation. I had moved from a small community, about two-thirds the size of West Richland in population. And when I left, there was no less than six recreational, medicinal, recreational pot shops. The county itself had about forty thousand people, and there was double that amount of pot shops in that county. County's not really a good place to live anymore. And we saw a change happening from the beginning of this, one first medicinal marijuana store, to what eventually had happened. I moved to West Richland, the city ordinance didn't allow marijuana stores. I thought this was a real breath of fresh air. Second time I address a council, I related a story about a Spokane City Councilwoman named Margaret Leonard back in the seventies. She stood up against the influence of drugs on the young people of Spokane, and she prevailed. And this person remembers it. You know, I was immersed in that drug culture, even at a young age of fifteen, sixteen years old. And she had an influence, when I finally grew up, she had quite an influence on me, you know, on my memory and the things that she did. Going back on the negative, going back to Spokane, 1974, I had an acquaintance who was a drug user and went to a different school. I wasn't really too closely associated with him, but I knew his drug dealer. And I knew his drug dealer supplier. And he met his drug dealer one day in a parking lot at a grocery store, bought his drugs, sat there and got high, took off driving, went through a red light, and hit a woman walking her granddaughter, excuse me, home from school, and killed the woman and severely injured the granddaughter. And I guess maybe that might have been a little bit of a turning point in my life. It was certainly a turning point in the lives of the family, the friends of that woman, that child, the consequences she suffered, I'm sure, for years and years and years. And the drug user himself, he had stated in his trial, and there was an arraignment that if he hadn't got high, this woman would still be alive. He was fully responsible for it. And he was held accountable, well, he was held accountable for it. But there were other people that were responsible for it. There was a drug dealer, and there was his supplier. And there was really the culture of the day had its responsibility in what happened that day. His life was forever changed, the family's life was forever changed. And the drug dealer and the supplier's life was changed in this respect. They lost a customer. That was it. They didn't care. They went on selling their drugs, it didn't matter. I lived in Spokane for maybe another year, year and a half, and nothing had really changed. So just in speaking about being responsible, so who's really responsible? Everybody that was involved in this woman's death and all the tragedies that went after that, they all were responsible. I just want you to think about that when you go to do this vote. Everybody was responsible for what happened that day. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? And a reminder is a three-minute comment period.
I'll try not to cry this time.
You did just fine.
Patricia Dobson, 610 South 54th Street. I guess what I want to say is, this is the second time we've voted on this and voted it down. And like the lady before said, please make it so it can't come up again. It's a waste of your time, it's a waste of our time. And to be honest with you, when I saw how you put it on the ballot, that you want cannabis taxes to come to your community, I thought you were gonna win. Thank goodness, people saw through it and said, "No, you need to listen to the people. We don't want this. We don't want the problems it's gonna bring to our community." Thank you. I'm gonna trust you to vote right.
Anyone else this evening?
Hi, my name's Dave Cole, and I live at 1710 Ironwood Avenue here in West Richland. I want to thank you for listening to us. And I had a cool, really cool talk prepared. And I don't think I can say anything better than what people have said here, other than amen and hey what they said. I would say that this, though, that council recognized that there was strong opposition to this when you called for an advisory vote. Now, we're back here again, and we're doing it respectfully. We think it's reasonable for the citizenry to expect that you'll keep your word and honor the vote. Several of you are on record as saying that you would consider the vote binding. So we expect you to vote no and reject the proposal. Additionally, we're asking council to not consider future proposals for pot shops or any other offensive establishment like strip clubs, adult stores, and the like. We would encourage you to stay true to our vision statement. And then let's continue working to attract good businesses that provide reliable tax revenue and actually add value to our city. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else up?
Kristen Christensen, 6001 Kilaway Drive. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what everybody else is saying, but I brought my entire family here tonight because we all are very passionate about this issue. It's been going on for way too long, in my opinion, almost two years. And I feel like we've spoken as a city of West Richland many, many times, that we are against allowing any pot shops into our beautiful, family-friendly city. And now we've voted. And I hope that because we've also voted for each and every one of you to be in the position that you're in, to be our representatives, that you will vote as representatives for us, that we've said we do not want to allow pot shops into our beautiful city. And thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else this evening? Seeing no one in house, virtually, raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. I see we have Bud R. with a hand raised. Stephanie, would you unmute that individual? And they have three minutes for comments. Go ahead, sir, or ma'am. You hear me? Try to unmute yourself. Well, Bud R.'s trying to figure out how to get in. Is there anybody else virtually that'd like to address council on this agenda item this evening? I see no others virtual. Stephanie, is it our end that is unmuted? We are unmuted on our side?
Correct. Bud R. will need to select to unmute themselves.
Bud R., would you please try to unmute yourself on your end? I'll give you one more try at that. You're unmuted on our side. All right, I do not see his ability to unmute himself. We are unmuted on our side, giving him an opportunity to address council on this agenda item. So with that, anybody else virtually? Star nine, or raise your virtual hand? Seeing no others, Stephanie, do you?
I do not see anyone else with their hand raised, no.
All right, council, the... No.
You think that's a pointer?
No. Yes. All right, very good. That's all good, we always have... The pointer's usually pointed at somebody's head in the council chambers here, but on our computer. Council, please note that the suggested motion in this packet is to deny the approval of the ordinance 2623. Do I have a motion?
I move to deny ordinance 2623 adopting the proposed text amendment that allows cannabis retail sales in the Light Industrial District with associated development regulations.
A motion and a second. Council, is there any questions or comments you might have that weren't previously addressed in the staff report? Councilmember Bloom?
I'd like to clarify something that was in the staff report. There was never a majority of the citizens that wanted marijuana. Forty-eight percent were either strongly in favor or somewhat in favor. And, you know, I will also clarify, I am not part of the Community and Economic Development Subcommittee. And when we met in January of 2023, I said, "We can't..." I was opposed to putting this on the, well, on the survey, saying that we should, if we wanted to move forward, we'd take it to a vote of the people. So I just wanted to clarify what was in the record.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Smart?
Yes, Mayor, council, audience members. I actually opposed having the advisory vote because I didn't think it was necessary. I would have liked to have had our council listen to and use their own judgment to make a vote, as they felt fit, of course, at an earlier point. But now that we've done this, you know, I want to make clear that the advisory vote is, from my position on this, which you're gonna hear me vote on in a moment, is very supportive. But I want to reemphasize that, given that this is a constitutional republic, and I am your representative, my decision to vote against having pot shops in West Richland, that was made several months ago. And although I very much appreciate your support, I very much appreciate your voice in helping to convince others, perhaps. I just want to say that I stand pretty strong on this issue, to not allow marijuana in West Richland, at least sales, those with medicinal needs, verifiable by a doctor or something. Of course, I have no problem with people seeking medical assistance in whatever way they need to. But for recreational purposes, this has always been on the do-not-do list in my life. And I don't want to ever be seen as encouraging anybody to take steps that I have seen people take in the past that have actually, like many of you have stated, have destroyed lives. I have personally seen that with friends of mine. And I would never be caught supporting this, or actually any of the other, you know, sin businesses, so to speak, that may be proposed to this city in the future. And I hope that your statements and advisory vote, and all of your support and statements at all these very many meetings, is listened to by not only us, but the Planning Commission, city staff, and all the rest of the citizens here in West Richland, who maybe feel the same way, but, you know, it's hard to come here, and I appreciate your efforts. So I wanted to make that statement. And I also want to mention that I was gonna make the same statement that Councilmember Bloom made about the characterization of the survey. And I also want to point out that I don't put a lot of credence in that survey, especially on an important issue like this. So that's my statement prior to this upcoming vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Stoker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to thank everyone, you know, on both sides of the aisle on this topic. You know, it takes a lot of guts to come and stand and speak. I've done it when I wasn't on this side of the dais. So thank you, everyone. It's great to see all your faces, and I'm probably not gonna hold my breath. It'd be great to see these faces continue to come going forward. I like to see community involvement, it's great. So thank you again, everyone, whether you're on my side or the other side. I am in the same boat as Mr. Smart. I stated early on that I campaigned against, on this particular topic, in my first campaign. I believe Mr. Smart was also that way as well. So this is not the primary, but it is one of the primary topics that got me involved in running for this office. So I will continue to be against this, so as my vote will recognize, and as I stated back in December, when we had the advisory vote, that I think three members on this side voted against. So anyway, I hope to continue to see your faces. It'll be great to have your input, to have your involvement. And whether you agree with us or not, that is a form of support, that you come and make an effort to be heard. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem Brink, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am gratified to see so many individuals here tonight. Thank you for coming. I count about forty-five-plus number of minors. And obviously, everyone spoke out against having a cannabis retail sales in West Richland. But what I'm equally proud of is the fact that we had 5,342 of our citizens express their opinion. And I'm glad we went to an advisory vote. Had we not gone to an advisory vote, it is very possible that we might have reached a different decision at council months ago. I don't know. But the key is, I appreciate the fact that 5,000-plus citizens took their time to express how they felt. And as I mentioned earlier, I want to follow the vote of the people, and I will follow the vote of the people. So thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you for participating, not just verbally here at the meetings, but also through your votes.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Brink, seeing no other cards up. Council, the motion was made to deny the approval. And I vote will be to deny the ordinance. And we remind the audience to please hold any emotions you may have. We operate this council chamber in an organized fashion. You can save the high fives for a little bit later after we adjourn this meeting. So I would remind everybody of that. So all in favor of denying approval of ordinance 2623, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel, appreciate that. We are going to go ahead and move on to item 8B. Is an ordinance amending the 2324 biennial budget. And with that, I'll ask Finance Director Aaron Gwynn to present her staff report this evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Gary. Good evening, counsel and citizens. This evening, I'm presenting the 12th Budget Amendment of the 2023-2024 Biennial Budget. This budget amendment contains seven items in five separate funds. The, the first item is in the Cumulative Reserve Fund for the sale of the property identified as Lot 1, Record of Survey 5323. This amendment recognizes the revenue for the property sale in the amount of $820,000 and increases appropriations in the amount of $47,500 for property cleanup and closing costs for a net ending fund balance increase of $772,500. Next item is for the Keene-Kennedy Intersection Project in Fund 355. This amendment recognizes $3,299 in revenue from the City of Richland as a contribution for the project. This amendment also increases the appropriations in the amount of $40,000, with the remaining $36,701 coming from the ending fund balance. In Fund 401, the Water Sewer Operating Fund, this amendment recognizes $6,500 in revenue from a cell phone tower company leasing land owned by the Water Sewer Utility. The company has expressed interest in renewing their lease, and before renewing the lease, the city obtains an updated appraisal to determine the fair market value. The funds collected are being appropriated to pay for the appraisal as well as staff time. The next four items are for public works projects that have been previously placed on hold due to limited engineering staff capacity. However, the city recently hired an additional project engineer after eighteen months of the job being posted. So in Fund 441, the Water System Development Fund, this budget amendment increases appropriations in the amount of $2,375,000 for two projects. The first is the PE portion of the Belmont Reservoir for $875,000. And the second is for Phase 1 of the Well Number 12 project for $1.5 million. These fund, the funding for these projects was previously secured through advanced payment of water system development fees. The other two projects are in Fund 442, the Sewer System Development Fund. The first project is for wastewater treatment plant access road modification flood mitigation project. I think an engineer made that name, in the amount of $1.2 million. The other project is for wastewater treatment facility plan, which has been partially budgeted for in the existing 2023-2024 budget, but requires an additional $147,500 in appropriations for a total project budget of $450,000. These funds for these projects were also previously secured through an advanced payment of sewer system development fees. Staff recommends passing the attached ordinance. This amendment authorizes an increase in the 2324 appropriations in the amount of $3,816,500 and an increase in total resources in the amount of $829,799, bringing the revised budget to a total of $148,630,001.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there anyone from the audience that'd like to speak to this agenda item this evening? I see no one in the audience. Anyone virtually like to speak to this agenda item this evening? Raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. Seeing none? Stephanie, do you see any?
I do not.
Counsel, may I have a motion, please?
I move to pass ordinance 19-24, amending the City of West Richland's 2023-2024 Biennial Budget.
Second. Motion and a second. Counsel, is there any questions that haven't been answered in the staff report you'd like to ask, Aaron? Seeing no one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. This evening, we do not have any unfinished business or new business. So this brings us to the time for our second and final public comment session. If you'd like to address counsel, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes, reminding you, counsel cannot interact back and forth from any comments you may have.
I'm on 3,600 South Highlands Boulevard. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, then we'll go ahead to virtual. If anybody would like to address counsel, please raise your virtual hand or star nine to be recognized. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
Not.
Going to go ahead and move on to staff and council announcements and reports. We'll start with staff. If anybody has anything this evening, hit up your card. I'll start with Public Works Director Roscoe Slade.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items tonight. Paradise Way, you saw some signs out there, they're doing an AR chip tonight. So that's what we did a few years ago on Keene and Bombin Range. So you'll see some delays tonight between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So it's basically a chip seal, but it's got rubberized, so it's an AR chip. Look for that. Once it's sat for a week, they'll come through in stripe and finish up that project. So minimal delays, except if you're trying to get down Paradise between Bombin Range and right before the hill. Expect some delays tonight. They had talked about it being three nights, but they're hopeful they can get it done in one night and be done with it. The other thing is, our Ben Franklin Council of Government went through a call for projects, and this is to determine the, the region's top six regionally significant transportation projects in, in our region. It's something that we typically do about every two years. Previously, our SR224 Red Mountain Project has been on the top of that list. Now that we believe we have it all, the funding secured and preparing for construction next season, that one has come off the list, and we submitted a Keene Road Widening Project. This would four-lane Keene Road from Bombin Range Road all the way down to SR224, do intersection improvements at South Highlands Boulevard. And it made the top six vote for our peers and other agencies. It actually scored the number four in the region. And so the next step is to go forward to the Good Roads Association and see if we can make the top six, which would be for our region and the Walla Walla region. It doesn't come with money, or funding, but it brings awareness to the project and elevates the need, and will assist us as we look for funding in the future for that project. And then lastly, Aaron stole my thunder. After eighteen months, we did secure a project engineer, local, lives here in West Richland. Happy to have a local resident work here. And so, yeah, there's a number of projects that were on hold in water and sewer. She's got extensive background in water sewer projects, masters in civil engineering, licensed PE. So it brings a lot of experience, and so we're able to kick off a number of water sewer capacity projects that we wanted to implement. So be moving forward with that. So look forward. Utility Committee will have some more discussions on those forthcoming. Thanks.
And if I'm not mistaken, about twenty years' experience?
Twenty plus, yes.
Yeah, so that really shows the, what we have to offer here at the city. When you can attract such talent, such as that, is, is certainly beneficial, as well as the efficiency and the, the attention to detail that Mr. Slade has in regards to bringing projects forward to the COG. We always score very well because he comes prepared. And he, he seems to get heckled a little bit from his public works directors because he always brings the bag of money and the wheelbarrow home to City of West Richland. But that's, that's what it's all about. Thank you, Roscoe, for what you do, we appreciate that. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to first thank all of the residents that have participated in this process. It's great to see everybody and their involvement. I hope you, again, I encourage you all to stay involved. We've got a lot of planning things coming our way, that it'd be good to have some feedback from the community. I did hear, and I wanted to respond to it, I, councilmembers as well as residents about never allowing this cannabis discussion to come back again. And that would be not possible, as this council can't prohibit future councils to take action on things. That's unconstitutional, it's not something that they can take action on. I would, though, want to maybe give some rest assured to residents that as long as this council sits here, I don't think they want to go through this again. And so I would imagine that they would be voting no, and anyone that would submit an application would be informed of such and would tell them that this was probably not the city you want to come and try this in, at least while this council is sitting. So I just want to maybe put some ease that you're, on your minds for that. But, yeah, unfortunately, they can't tie future councils to decisions that they make today.
Thank you, Eric. And we're going to get a, a card for Jessica, not Stephanie, because I believe she might have something to add to Eric's comment in regards to that, so.
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, it's interesting, the attorney doesn't get a card. But I would just reiterate what Mr. Menon Hall said in that I think we all want to live in a country where we have due process in regards to our property rights. So we, we can't tell citizens, nor do I think anybody would want us to. You can't apply to your government to ask for them to change something. But, you know, there are really three ways that, that this type of amendment can get to this point. One through council, one through the Planning Commission, and one through staff recommending to the Planning Commission, which then would go to council. So I would agree that there's been a lot of publicis, publicization about what we've been through over the last couple of years. So, you know, as much as the advisory vote did take a lot of time and, and may have been somewhat expensive, I think probably would serve as a deterrent to people applying for this, in the near future at least. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jessica, appreciate that. Counsel, comments? Councilmember Bloom?
Two comments, one, one follow-up on the vote. It's sort of interesting that we had, you know, this was a primary election. There was, I, I lose count of how many people were running for, for governor. But, but it's interesting that the votes on this issue are about twenty percent higher than they were for our general election that elected the other council members in 2022. Or twenty, yeah, I guess it was, yeah, last general election. And, yeah, getting there. I had another birthday, so. The, the other thing I would like to tell you is today, we had a special election, a special meeting for the Ben Franklin Transit Board, and we voted to approve a contract. So we will have a new general manager for Ben Franklin Transit starting on Monday.
Thank you. And who might that individual be?
The individual's name is Thomas Droste.
Local?
No, he, he comes to us via many other transit agencies. The last one, he was out of Atlanta, but he left that one.
Graphic reasons, I'm sure. Councilmember Moran?
Sorry, so much paper here. Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say that this past Friday, there was a Ben Franklin Council of Government meeting, and they did announce that, it is absolutely official now. I think it's been about a month now that we have the new grant navigator that's been on staff for the Council of Governments. So if we need assistance at all with any grants, she's hitting the ground running, so she'll be there for us. They also have a new staff accountant, so they're trying to pick up the speed with having all of the new folks on board. I am thrilled that one of our projects made it on the regional priorities list, which, thank you big time to Mr. Slade over there. Ranked number four out of eleven? Yeah, so that's a big deal. So whenever we have the Ben Franklin Council of Governments, or anybody from the local municipalities that is speaking on behalf of BF COG, and we speak to the federal or the state legislators, the priority list is what we're going to go off of. So if we have a chance to talk about four things, that fourth thing is going to be about our Keene Widening Project here. So that is a big, big deal. So again, kudos to Mr. Slade and all the work you're doing. Mr. Menon Hall, I know that you're also on the other board that's there for BF COG. So just all around, West Richland has kind of taken over the Tri-Cities organizations. I mean, between the HAB, I'm the vice chair of BF COG. So, yeah, we're doing good stuff out there. And thank you all for being here. Please, 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 please come back. Government should not happen in the dark. We need people to watch it happen, because if you don't, then surprises that you might not like happen. So please, please come out and watch us. Email us, write us letters. I haven't gotten any in a long time, but write us, you know, physical letters in the snowmill. But again, thank you all for being here.
Councilmember Moran? I'll throw it back to Councilmember Bloom just shortly. He has a little pitch for the fair that's coming up.
I forgot. Ben Franklin Transit bus to the fair is free. This is compliments of the CPC Co., they're funding it. So if you ride to the fair free, so pick it up at the park and ride at Tulip Lane, or go into Richland, pick it up down there. I was warned Tulip Lane has construction equipment in there, so it's a little crowded.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Fettow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to talk for the vote, on the vote, because I wanted to get to the vote. But thank you all for coming out and speaking. I think Kristen, Kristen, she had said that this is since November 2022. And I had to go back and, was it really that long ago? It's, it felt like a lot longer, but 2020, November 2022, the CD Subcommittee heard this. That's Mr. Smart, Mr. Brink, myself, and it feels like a lifetime ago. I'm glad it's over. I'm also, I support the advisory vote, because had this, let's say it failed in December 4 to 3, that would have invited the petitioner to maybe come back. Loud and clear from the citizens, we do not want it in our town. Again, if this ever were to come back, we talked about this at our last CD Subcommittee, Subcommittee meeting. If it does come back, the CD Subcommittee will stop it before it moves forward. Our recommendation to staff will be, this story had been talked about, we're ready to move on, and something else. So, so thank you all who have come out. Again, like everybody else has said, we hope to see you when we're dealing with property line amendments, or where to put the next streetlight. Our government does not happen in the dark, but we do have, we do sit in here in this room by ourselves quite a bit. We would like to see you, if nothing else, just come and say hey. Last week, big, big, big weekend for Redmont Event Center. NASCAR came back to the Tri-Cities, as I call it, the West Richland Raceway. I know the mayor will speak a little, but I'll tell you, watching him back in his race suit in the car, probably the highlight of the year. I'm sure Brent will talk a little about that. School starts next week. I know our kids just left. School starts, slow down. Watch for blinking lights, watch for students walking on the sidewalks, crossing streets. We have to get back in the, the habit of twenty miles an hour past our schools. The fair, so in my day job, I work for Spokane Teachers Credit Union. If you work for a school district, does not have to be Richland, could be Kennewick, Pasco, wherever, free admission to the fair tomorrow on behalf of STCU. So if you work for, be the, the guy who cuts the lawn, doesn't matter if you work for a school district, free admission to the fair. And then finally, from West Richland Chamber, our own Mayor Pro Tem Fred Brink is speaking next, next month, 9/11, as a first responder to 9/11 event. As, and he can talk more about his qualifications, but he will be speaking about his experiences 9/11 on the pile. So that will be 9/11, noon at the police department, because we wanted a bigger space to handle. We expect a pretty big crowd for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fettow. And we'll go to Councilmember Spark- Thank you, Councilmember Fettle, and we'll go to Councilmember Spark before finishing up with Mayor Pro Tem Brink. Councilmember Smart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, thanks for coming out, and as you've heard, we we appreciate your input. You'd be amazed at how many impactful items this council makes decisions on that affect you, but nobody's here to say anything about it. So, you know, listen in, you can come in on the, on the Zoom call or or be here in person. Highly encouraged. Um, I wanted to say I I had the the pleasure and honor of helping out at the West Richland booth at the National Night Out. Um, Aaron was there with me as well as some other city staff, and uh we had a sort of a neat booth where um we came up with, uh, I think Stephanie helped with this, a list of trivia items about the city of West Richland. You know, so can you answer the question about how many gallons of water did we process in twenty twenty-three? Um, if I remember right, the answer was something like one point two billion. Are Roscoe? Did I get it? Okay, cool. Uh, I didn't know most of the answers. I mean, uh, I'll tell you one answer I did know that uh we had about eight, I would say eighty people, maybe sixty, eighty people, adults stopped by the booth. Uh, if you answer the question right, or if we just had pity on you, we give you a cookie. Um, very few people got any of the answers, right? And some of them were things that they were way off, like we would ask, what's the, what's the biennial budget for West Richland? And we got, we got answers like a hundred thousand. We got answers like sixty-five thousand. And then I would follow up with like, well, how many full-time employees are there in the city of West Richland? And they would guess, and I would tell them, there's, there's eighty-five full-time employees, maybe eighty-six now, I don't know. Um, and 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 then I would ask them again, so what do you think the budget is? And they'd up their, they'd up their, you know, to like two hundred and fifty thousand. I'd be like, you know, and I'd go up and up, and they get to like fifty million, they give up, and I go like, you know, hun- hundred and forty-seven or a hundred and forty-eight million dollars, right? Um, you all, by definition, are on the like top point zero five percent of residents who know that there are seven council members on this council. Many people didn't even know we had a city council. Okay, let alone how many sat on it or what we did. So you all are like at the top of your class. Thank you. And and go home and spread the news to your neighbors, right? That we exist, and it's important, and and please participate. And and watch for those openings in the Planning Commission and the Parks Commission and uh all the other boards that that we may have. You know, on occasion, we have a blue ribbon library panel, and when we review the library contract, things of this nature come up on a regular basis where you all can have a real live impact as to where those dollars go and how much you get taxed. So, thank you for your time. Oh, uh, last thing, I wanted to say, the uh, the attendance proclamation. Um, I I, it's, it's, it's a, it's an awesome proclamation. I just want to make sure it's clear that that applies to all of those students attending public schools, private schools, and homeschools. So you all need to attend class, uh, whether it's in your bedroom, your living room, or at a big building down the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smart. Mayor Pro Tem Brink, you have the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just two topics I'd like to cover. One, uh, the first one is in my role as the Vice President of the Association of Washington Cities. We are finalizing our legislative priorities for the state legislator, uh, legislated legislature, excuse me, uh, when they start meeting again in January after the first of the year. Some of the top priorities that are being considered include money being dedicated toward law enforcement, recruitment, and retention, which obviously is very near and dear to all of us, safety of our public, safety of our citizens. Another topic that's being uh considered as a top priority is, of course, transportation funding. That has its ups and downs with every session as to where the money goes, how the money's going to be distributed, how much money is going to be available. So I will be working with my fellow board members with A W C to push those top two priorities as well as several others that we are putting together. Uh, the second topic I will talk about is is really, it's kind of um focused with my fellow council members. Um, I have the privilege of sitting in some of the budget discussions with staff that are taking place. And as we start put together our next biennial budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, uh, we are going to have to make some very crucial decisions uh because we have to make sure that our eighty-six staff members are compensated for their time and effort. We have to make sure that our roads, our public safety, our community development, our information technologies, um, our human resources, our city's administration, the city clerk's office, all have the capability, tools, equipment, training needed to do their job to serve our citizens. We're very fortunate that we have the highest uh per capita or per household income in the Tri-Cities. I think it's about a hundred and twenty thousand, which is far, far below Kennewick, Pasco, and Richland. So we do have great household income in the city. To have great services costs money. We all know that. To continue our great services, to hire the top talent, as Mr. Slate talked about, to be sure that we have the uh 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 ability to build the new development in Lewis and Clark Ranch, to build it right, to build it correctly, is going to take time, effort, and commitment. And so we, council members, will have to make some tough choices. We might have to consider a transportation benefit district. We might have to consider a metropolitan parks district. We might even have to consider a levy lid lift on the property taxes. None of those are pleasant, because they require citizens and all of us to pay more. But I heard several citizens throughout this commentary period say, well, we'd be willing to pay, find alternative means. So I also ask our citizens that if these proposals come forth from your council, that you show the same zeal, enthusiasm, and dedication towards supporting these that you did in opposing cannabis. Because the city needs additional revenue to maintain the level of service that we have all grown accustomed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Brink. And for that reason that I've included Mayor Pro Tem Brink in our budget discussions is for him to realize the severity of budgeting and how difficult it is, as Ms. Rince also knows quite well. Uh, and uh, for him to help share uh his thoughts with you, council members. We will continue these discussions and budget workshops. Uh, we will lay out other opportunities of funding as we have in the past, and I would expect you to take them seriously and make the difficult decisions and hopefully gain the support of our citizens as you have with this particular situation that we dealt with this last couple of years. Uh, so more to come in regards to the budget side of things. Uh, and since Councilmember Fettle called me out, I wasn't going to speak to that about uh a a race car and a suit. But Red Mountain Event Center has been very successful uh in their efforts to uh bring events to our region, not only in the Motorsports Avenue, but other avenues, monster trucks, uh fireworks shows, uh, uh, different events that are leased out to uh car clubs. Uh, we call them Cone Dodgers for the uh, the S C C people with their, with their sports cars. But they also have put a ride-along uh car, which has two seats in it. So I I I'm not competing, but I'm offering rides through the uh Red Mountain Event Center for media purposes, things in that nature. Uh, but uh, I I was afforded the opportunity to uh uh have Greg Biffle show me a a line around that racetrack that I wish never to attempt on my own with my foot in the shoe and the seat. But uh, yeah, it was a great event, uh packed the house, uh, and rumor has it that we may see him back here again. Uh, it was a successful event and uh I, well over three thousand-plus participants. Uh, a hundred and fifty of those were from the uh Napa Auto Care Program that sponsored uh the event, which was region-wide. Uh, and the beauty of it is, is it went off without a hitch. We had no problems in the stands, in the pits, very well organized. Thank you, uh, Commander or Commander for your, your participation with your people. Uh, and then also, uh, we got zero complaints from our citizenry in regards to the holding of this event, which brought in hundreds of thousands of dollars to our region. Uh, hotels, heads in beds, restaurants, eateries, grocery stores. Uh, i- i- it's just a huge economic sprinkler. And while we don't have a hotel motel out here, these types of events and this type of facility is is an assistance to to gaining that kind of interest from a hotelier that might want a a a small hotel or boutique hotel or something of that nature. I I was talking to some of the participants, they were, they were using, using uh uh B and Bs and Airbnbs and things like that. But it's just a, it just shows that uh a dream, a teamwork makes a dream work, and I can't be more happy to have uh the Red Mountain Event Center uh in our backyard bringing, bringing motorsports after thirty years back to NASCAR, back to uh the West Richland Raceway, right? So uh, while I had to, had to buy a new driving suit to fit, because the other one was a little bit tight, uh, after thirty-four years, uh, it was like riding a bike, and it was enthusiastic. But my wife says that uh I can't participate in a, in a real event, because I couldn't afford the divorce, so. So with that said, thank you all for coming. I appreciate the patience that you had. Uh, I I I believe strongly, whether, even though it was an an expensive venture, uh, this council made a decision to listen to the the voters as a whole, and and I think that is the utmost importance is listening to what the people, all the people have to say. People spoke, and the response from your city council was for what the people asked for. So thank you very much for coming this evening, and uh do travel safe. And if we have licensing cats or anything coming up, I'm sure we'll fill the the council chambers again. So thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned at seven forty-one.